We got with my daughter. Some friends coming in.
Oh, that's fine.
My sister-in-law lives up there. Sister-sister. We're gonna be.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to you. So glad everyone's here this evening. It is the January 7th, 2020, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin this meeting like we do every meeting with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Love is going to lead us in the pledge, and then Councilman Alexander is going to offer the invocation. If you'd stand with me, please.
Actually, I said it backwards. I'll go how we normally do it.
We need to pray. Let us pray. Father God, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for all the trials and tribulations that you have brought us through the year. We thank you for allowing us to come into 2020. Now, Lord, we pray that thou will be in the midst of this meeting, and let everything we say and do be pleasing to your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray, in every heart set. Amen.
Please face the flag and read the Pledge of Allegiance.
Consider the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for working that out. That was backwards, and I apologize. You haven't done this in a while, you know? Ms. Kethel, can you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fan.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, before you have the minutes from the November 19th, 2019 council meeting and the December 3rd council meeting.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton.
Second.
A second by Councilman Fennell. Are there any additions, corrections? You see none? All in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. At this time, we'll have public recognition on agenda-related items. That's any item that's on this evening's agenda is now open for public comment. You may come forward. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your name and your address. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Also, I want you to know that there will be a time at the end of the meeting for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So you're welcome to come forward if you have an item that's not being discussed tonight of interest to yourself. So, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. Yeah, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. We'll move on now to mayor's comments. I have just a few comments I want to share with you this evening. First of all, I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas, and I wish you all a Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a little time off at least and got to enjoy some time doing whatever it is that you love to do. And I hope you're, like us, are looking forward to 2020. We're looking forward to another exciting, fun year in which we get a lot of things done. So we thank you all for your support and your kindness, and our community is very, very fortunate. And it's because of the good people that live here and love our community. So I thank you for that. Also, I want to thank you all for remembering the family of Master Patrol Officer Spencer Bristol. He was laid to rest today. I know that his family will continue to appreciate your thoughts and prayers. It's been hard on our police department and certainly the Hendersonville Police Department and other departments around here. I want you to know our city has lent support to the city of Hendersonville. Both the fire department and the police department have covered shifts for them and made it possible for them to honor him appropriately. So we appreciate that. Also, I want everyone to know that Chuck Stewart, our building official, for those of you who may not know, his mother has passed away. She died last week, and she was laid to rest yesterday. Again, I'm sure that he would appreciate your thoughts and prayers. And with that, I think I will just mention some events coming up. We'll start with Ms. Rachel Nichols' birthday, which is this Thursday. On this Friday, there is a great opportunity for anyone that wishes to attend. We kick off Good Morning Gallatin. That's what used to be known as the Government Relations Breakfast at Sumner Regional. This year, it's being moved, but they're kicking it off this year in a big way. It's going to be held at Epic Events Center, and they're taking reservations. And Governor Billy is going to be our guest for that, or be their guest as the chamber doing it. So if you would like to attend, you're welcome to call the chamber and make reservations. That number is four five two four thousand. Next Tuesday, which is the 14th, is our retirement reception, which doesn't mean that Ms. Johnson's leaving yet, but we're having her reception just in case she might be leaving sooner than some of us hope she does. Next Tuesday, right before this council meeting, at 5:00 in the upstairs lobby. Following Sunday is Zach Wilkinson's birthday. And then that Sunday is going to be the Ms. Gallatin pageant, followed by Monday, the 20th, which is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. City offices will be closed, and on that day, the Sumner County Unity Day March will be happening. As it always does, it will begin in the City Hall parking lot at noon, and I would encourage you all to attend that. That will conclude the mayor's comments for this evening, and we'll move now to the regular agenda. First item on the agenda is the Dangerous Building Complaint and Show Cause Hearing for 170 East Shell Street. It's James and Kathy Sharlett and Ms. Hi McCauley, and Catherine is going to be taking Mr. Stewart's place.
Yes, I'm here. Kevin Black, Building Codes Department, and Ms. Sharlett, the owner, is here.
Thank you.
Mr. Black, if you could just give counsel for the record, well, first state the address of the property.
170 East Shell Street.
And Ms. Sharlett is here. Can you just give counsel, before you direct anything to Ms. Sharlett, can you explain to the council why this has been deemed a dangerous and uninhabitable building?
Because it has unsafe electrical. Plumbing was, when I was there, which was over a year ago now, plumbing was not functioning. Floor was in danger of caving in, broken floor joists, lots of water damage in the house.
And no one is currently inhabiting the building, is that correct? No one's living in the building now?
No.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want counsel to know about the building before you turn it over to Ms. Sharlett?
Well, the building could be renovated. You know, a contractor could pull permits and renovate the house. It's not beyond salvageable.
Okay. Ms. Sharlett, is there anything that you would like to tell this council?
Yes, I would like to know if I could have more time to fix it or get it sold. I'm trying to sell it, too.
Okay, so Ms. Sharlett has asked for additional time to either get the building up to codes, to get it repaired, or for it to be sold.
How much time is it?
It's gonna be six months or more, close to a year.
How much time? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
About six months to a year. So, I don't know.
Sharlett, if you had something working on it, I wouldn't mind giving, you know, three months or so if you had time to work on it, if you had somebody working on it, or you had some plans for it. But just to wait till it sells or something to do with it, this has been going on a long time. So I would rather move forward with the dangerous building. Our Codes Department is saying it's dangerous, and we need to move forward. But if you have some plans for it, or you have a contractor that wants to work on it, or something to that effect, I'd be glad to give you more time. But if you don't have any plans, at this time, you're just waiting for somebody to come in to buy it. I don't think that's gonna happen, so unless you have a plan, set plan for it. Do you have a plan for it?
Not right at this moment, but I do want to get it fixed, if I could, or sell it.
If we give you 30 days, could you come up with a plan, and somebody's gonna work on it, give us, you know, the details of that?
Yeah, I can try.
If we give you 30 days?
Yes, sir, I'll try, do my best.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'll make a motion, give her 30 days to come up with a plan that they're gonna get this building fixed, or contractors or something to that effect. But if it's not in 30 days, then I'm willing to move forward to declare the dangerous building, move forward with it.
I just want to clarify, are you giving your 30 days to come back and then declare it a dangerous building? Or are you asking to be declared dangerous tonight and 30 days to come back with a plan?
I'm only declaring a dangerous building tonight, and she has 30 days to come back to prove to us that she's got something to move forward with, and I'll be okay to move forward with that. And give her more time if she has something, and she's gonna come up with a plan to do that. I'd be more than happy to work with her.
And if she does not get it, if she doesn't come back within 30 days, you want to begin the demolition process? Or what is?
That's correct. That's me.
Excuse me, so it can be sold? Can't sell it if somebody want to buy it?
If you get us a contract within the 30 days, ma'am, we'd probably give you more time. I'm just one person on the council, but if you bring a contract to us within 30 days, I think we would all be willing to let you sell the building as long as they have a plan to do something with it.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, and I just want to comment that it seems to me that it might be an easier process if we just did 90 days like we typically do to solve the issues. And then at that point, we are ready for demolition or, you know, or demolition. Because that way, she has that 90 days to get something done, because otherwise, she's just gonna be come back for 30 days.
I agree with you on that, ma'am, because 30 days, I mean, she's not gonna be able to do too much in 30 days. And our building code did say, I'm sorry, our building code did say the house could be fixed. So it's not like it's a dangerous building for its damage and that. So I would love to see us give her 90 days also.
And I would agree with John D.
You want to change the motion?
I'm okay with it. I don't, I'm not one way opposed against it.
But that's 90 days to rectify the issue.
Yes, that's correct.
Or get it sold or something.
Sold or.
Are we talking about having completed or being processed?
I think at this point, your 90 days, if something changes and you're close but not completely finished, you let us know.
If there's significant improvements, I'm okay to move mine to 90 days instead of 30.
I'm just gonna make the motion, 90 days.
Okay, that's where we are.
Okay. But who made it?
You.
No changes.
Got you.
It's me. I apologize. I turned it off when I was rattling papers. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sharlett. Thank you, Mr. Black. Item number two on the agenda is second reading on ordinance 01911-56, and for that, Councilman Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading for an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, amended the zoning ordinance, Article 7, provision for mixed-use districts. Section 7, intent and description for the multi-residential and office district. Section 703, intent and description of the mixed-use district. Article 8, provisions for commercial districts. Section 8, intent and purpose of core commercial district. Sections 8.04, intent and purpose of the planned general commercial district. Section 8.05, intent and purpose of the planned neighborhood commercial district to permit animal care as a permitted use and permitted use with conditions. Authorizing the revisions to be made to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances provided for severability and provided for an effective date. So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? If not, this is second reading on ordinance 01911-56. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passed unanimously. Item number three is second reading on ordinance 01911-57. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the last plantation at Fairview, preliminary master development plan, and a revised final master development plan, an amendment to the foxland at Fairview preliminary master development plan, and a revised final master development plan, and a preliminary master development plan for Tennessee grasslands on 285.88 acres, zoned MRO, multiple residential and office, located at 981 Plantation Boulevard and at 1445 Foxon Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Certainly.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that I wasn't sure about this at first, but after hearing what Mr. Goodall said and the approval of the home association, that I'm for this now also.
Susie, I don't have to say nothing, it's all living there, do I? I'm fine devoted.
Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01911-57. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passed unanimously. Item four is first reading on ordinance 01911-60. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance appropriating $14,003 on $4.27 from revenue received from insurance for damage to engine number three. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01911-60. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 01912-61. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $20,000 from stormwater maintenance, the Stormwater Administration, and appropriating $9,305 from finance to human resources. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Alexander. Opening for any discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 01912-61. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 01912-62. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a portion of two parcels totaling 87.34 acres from the PGC Planned General Commercial District to the MRO, multiple residential and office district, and a .64 acre portion of a parcel from the estate, A, Sumner County District, to the PGC Planned General Commercial, and approval of a preliminary master development plan for McCain Station totaling 130.78 acres, located north of Highway 386 and east of Big Station Camp Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander, and discussion? With no one wishing to discuss, this is first reading on ordinance 01912-62. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Thank you. Item number seven is resolution R1912-65. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a resolution appointing the Retirement Plan Committee, and I so move.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fennell, and the Retirement Planning Committee. I will read the names so that you know who they are. Rachel Nichols, our Finance Director, Zach Wilkinson, employee, wait, no. It is Zach Wilkinson from Public Works, not police. So I was like, wait a second, something's wrong here. And then Kate Nowitzki from the Police Department. So I think there was just some spacing issues there, but we'll correct that. So that's your retirement plan committee. Resolution R1912-65. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item eight is resolution R1912-66. Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution for the implementation for the Berry Brady Act, public caper 490. So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion?
I like, who's in charge of implementing that?
The HR department.
Is it state inspected?
State inspected? What do you mean?
Is there anybody to follow up on that? Audited?
Well, I mean, audit from a financial standpoint?
Well, I really just making sure that, by state regulations, I assume they sort something out on it.
Well, I mean, I think we're all kind of charged with all, Ms. Hi McCauley. We're all kind of charged with, you know, following the letter of the law. I don't know that this specifically would be audited. I don't, I don't know that we could, your thoughts on that?
To my knowledge, there's not gonna be an audit by the state, but it's a new law that we have to follow.
I mean, who enforces it? Do we do it locally, or do they do it for state?
No, we do it locally. That's why we're, that's why we have the resolution, that we implement this, and then we will implement it.
If you'll recall from the presentation, it was basically passed by the state last year. They don't really know the fiscal impact on local government, but once it's asked for, the local government's pretty much forced to implement it.
Why are we forced to?
Because it's a law?
Because.
Then why we have to pass it, based on state law?
We're implementing our plan. We're implementing the plan.
Did we already vote? I mean, did we already have a motion?
We have a motion and a second, but we haven't had.
Do we know what this is gonna cost us?
No. No, I mean, we have an idea of what it could. Debbie, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, you have some updated information? We didn't know when it was presented to us a few weeks ago. They came back with some numbers on what they thought would be the local impact to, I mean, the impact to local governments, but it was as of the state as a whole. So how it's gonna impact us depends on the amount of testing we have to do and how many request it and.
Exactly. They came back with a fiscal note on local governments, and it was 700,000 statewide. But it really depends, the exact fiscal note for us would depend on the benefits that we currently provide and how those benefits are offset by insurance. And we think, as I said last time, that it will be offset by our health insurance, some of these annual screenings. The impact, that's still unknown, that we have to look at, and we've asked Jamie and Hannah, our Risk Department, to look at this, Risk Manager, excuse me, to look at our work comp carrier, because the benefits are to be provided for up to five years from the last exposure of the smoke or fumes, et cetera, not from the termination date of the firefighter. So that would be something that might be outside our insurance benefits. So they're suggesting, IMTAS recommended, that we look into our policy with our carrier to see if there is a way to get additional coverages for this.
And it's going to impact every municipality in the state, and so I think the state needs to
It'd be throughout the state.
Help figure out how we're supposed to provide for that when it's kind of a possibility at this point. Did we hear from Blue Cross Blue, who is our current insurance carrier, our Blue Cross Blue Shield, about? Have we heard anything from them yet?
Blue Cross, we do have an email from Blue Cross that the preventive types of things that are required would fall under their coverages. The problem we have, you know, if there was further treatments and things, we don't know, because that would be based on an individual basis of what would be covered and.
But they are willing to cover the screenings, even though they wouldn't be considered routine based upon age?
Right. Those screenings, they have told us that they're covering, that they had their staff look at that. But the, I think the bigger issue is after the employee leaves us, and they have, you know, something that may have happened five years from the day of the fire exposure.
Who will be in charge of seeing, documenting when the explosion happened?
That would be the Fire Department.
Which they document now, they document. Anyone else?
We have more, you know, information on the fiscal notes. I'm sure Connie will be bringing forward, or more information on the coverages if we can change our contracts, you know, what that cost might be, or what the other cities are doing. We wouldn't be doing this alone, so, you know, she would be researching with Jamie and Hannah the, what other cities have put in place to address this and the cost.
And to be clear, when she says Connie now, she doesn't mean Ms. Kethel. She means Ms. Flood.
Yes, Ms. Flood. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is resolution R1912-66. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passed unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us down to other business, and so I'd ask if there's anyone with this council that does have other business to come forward? To bring it up? Seeing no one? No other business? We haven't met in weeks? That's amazing. All right, we'll move now, have I got someone, department head that has other business? Okay, no. All right, we'll move now to public recognition for non-agenda-related items. If you have something that you'd like to speak to that's not on the evening's agenda, you may come forward and do so at this time. Remember to introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Frank Marchese, 589 Harris Lane. I'd like to just, once again, discuss the ordinance 01704-33, the nuisance ordinance for noise. I'd like to thank the Police Department for responding when we report violations of that ordinance from Liberty Creek, which is still happening on Sundays. Whether they get a summons or a talking to, the Police Department is taking care of it. I did like to ask for a further clarification in the ordinance. It does state that no noise is allowed outside of 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Saturday, in inhabited residential areas. However, uninhabited residential areas are dawn to dusk, Monday through Sunday. I am not sure of the line between inhabited and uninhabited residential areas. We do have another major project going on in our little corner of the city, Kensington Downs, and they're out there on Sundays with their jackhammers, or whatever they do, pile drivers. They don't back up to my property, but the noise certainly resonates through our community. And I don't know if that's reportable or not, and I would like, since the council passed this ordinance, I'd like your interpretation of what inhabited and uninhabited means.
Well, back when we last did this, it was intended to mean, and of course, interpretation's always key, it was intended to mean when there were neighbors who would be bothered, that would be inhabited.
But I don't know that there's any way to actually quantify that distance, so.
I mean, that is something that we would have to research. We spent quite a bit of time, I know the Building Codes Department spent a lot of time on this, and we researched what other communities had done. I can get with the Codes Department if that's what the council wants to do, and we could do some further research. But I will do as the council directs.
So I don't want to seem like a, we don't want to seem like a nuisance to the Police Department for reporting things that an officer might determine to be not valid. I don't want to waste their time, but then again, I would like to sleep past 7:00 AM on Sundays, as a lot of people may want to. I'm sure I'm not the only one in my neighborhood who can hear it. If it's happening behind the Freedom Church, and I can hear it, I'm sure when I walk my dog across Harris Lane to the other side, I could still hear that pounding going all the way down, right to the city limit sign. So there are other people that I'm sure can hear it that, I don't know whether they report it or not. I don't have a tally of who reports what, but I'm coming to you for advice.
Well, there's also, remember, a difference between being able to hear it and that decimal reading.
And what, ma'am? I'm sorry.
The decimal, huh?
And being able to hear it in what?
I think just because you can hear something doesn't mean that it is a nuisance. It's the decimal reading on your, on your property, is that how, or at the property line? At your property line is how we were determining the noise, the actual noise violations at the time when we were having a real issue and rewrote all that.
So the decimal readings that I've been keeping might come in handy.
Sure.
At some point.
Could Codes find out from another municipality how they handle that? And let us know.
I will say that in a recent thread amongst attorneys, a lot of communities don't have this ordinance. There is no restriction, but.
So I'm thankful for the ordinance.
That's right.
To begin with. I just would, you know, like to be able to enjoy some peace and quiet on the land that we purchased in the city.
Are they still coming out with houses out of the ground, or most of that getting built out on that street by now?
And I'm not talking about Liberty Creek. I'm talking about Kensington Downs. No, I'm not talking about Liberty Creek. I'm talking about Kensington Downs.
They ain't starting houses.
They're, they're using a, they're using a pile driver on Greenley, right off of Greenley. That, that was my question to the council, and... Charles, my contact information, so if we could...
I thought on the construction, we had changed the timeframe recently with a concrete time because of the whole dawn to dusk thing, and the time change, and, you know, you don't want people working until 9:00 PM.
Well, dawn to dusk, Monday through Sunday, and uninhabited. It's seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, and inhabited, so it's, where's the line?
We will research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Pascal Gervais, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I'm follow-up on what Frank just said about the nuisance or not nuisance. Madam Mayor, I'll be glad to invite you on Sunday for breakfast, and all of you too, so you can realize what it is, and think if it's a nuisance or not. If you're there, you can probably realize it better, so invite you for breakfast whenever you're available on Sunday, so you can see by yourself. Another thing, I know the police came on Sunday again, and the contractors were there, said they didn't know what the noise ordinance was, so we made our research too, and I know that some out of state, different states use different form, but one form they use is that they post sign on the construction site to actually tell worker that they can't, there is an ordinance they're supposed to follow, and I think maybe that should be something we could think about, or perhaps the developer put that at, at the entry of his sign, of the side, put a sign that the ordinance say that people should not work on Sunday, and put it on Spanish too, because a lot of these workers are Hispanic. So I think maybe that should be something we could think about to help the community, because it's getting out of hand, and like you know, it's money-driven, so again, we're limited on, I suppose, on the fine we can give these people, but a lot of you guys are in business and know what contractor, and know they have contract penalties if they don't finish on time, and sometimes they just waive, you know, the penalty, and if they can work two or three hours without getting caught, that less money they're gonna have to pay on the back end, so maybe the sign is an idea, you could shoot, maybe could think about it and add it somewhere. That's all. Happy New Year, and the breakfast invites still stand.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think the signs is a bad idea. I think we should ask the contractors to put them up.
No, that's what I say.
That was basically a suggestion, but if the, the city said that, put it somewhere that the contractor have to post, they would have to do it. I don't say the city has to pay for it, but the city need to do something, so the contractor has to do it.
I like it. Thank you. Mr. DeBoer?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I rise up today to make a speech. I live at 1007 Hart Street, my name is Dodo DeBoer. So that ends that, Jimmy. So anyway, first issue I wanna come up with is, as we start a new year, I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the many good things that's going on in the city of Gallatin. We just finished up the little funding for the Miracle Park, and we're still looking for donations for that, but we got one little project we need to look at, and that is starting the process of getting our streets and our sidewalks placed in the city. We have not touched that issue for a while. We are doing, we are doing some work on it, but we need to get focused in on the sidewalks, and I see a lot of people walking around the city, we don't have a sidewalk for them to work on, walk on. Uh, one of the things that we have also, I noticed in a, in a conversation I had with our, Mr. Isabel, our person that handles the evaluation of properties, we've held off on, on doing a lot of work because we did not know how things were gonna come out, and how much money we have coming in on the property tax. Uh, this is how it works, as of right now. Mr. Isabel tries to get everything lined up, so we'll know pretty well what we have for the following year in about the first of April. He also comes back again around August, according to what he told me, so that if there's anything that needs to be adjusted, can be adjusted at that time. In other words, if you had a piece of property that somebody wanted to come in and do a different zoning or whatever, that could go to his, his staff real quick. If we got it done, say, last of July, first of August, then he can have it in for our, for the moneybags, be, be evaluated for the, for our property tax. That has something that may have something to, that we need to look at. So I think that we need to follow up on that, and I wanna thank everyone for a wonderful job in the past calendar year, and I wanted to take time tonight to wish everyone a new, a happy new year, and I think we're, we're going in the right direction. We appreciate, even you, Mayor Brown, for your work. Appreciate it very much.
Wow, thanks.
I had to give you a hard time, Mayor, you know that. We love you, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Now I declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn and say goodnight. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Fan. All in favor, say aye. Return. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. I hope you all have a good evening, be safe going home. Thank you.